Welcome, everyone. This is a special public council meeting of Turo Town Council for Thursday, April 17, 2025. Council, you've received a copy of today's agenda. I would ask for a motion to approve the agenda for today. Councillor McGrath, secondor, councillor Fleming, any discussion? All those in favor of approving say aye. Contrary minded? Councillor McGrath?
Sir, Madam Mayor, I think we were making a change to the order of the agenda. I believe we were moving Downtown Turo Partnership.
No, this is, that's not for this. This is a special meeting, councillor.
This is the first one.
Yeah, this is the first one, okay. All those in favor say aye. Contrary minded? Motion approved. Thank you for the agenda. Item number two is the preapproval form for the Spring Debencher 2025. Mr. Doulter.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, at the Turo Town Council meeting on March 2025, council approved the borrowing of funds to cover the costs associated with two pieces of equipment, a Hydravac and a street sweeper. And as well, the third item was the stadium ice plant. The stadium ice plant is not yet complete. The town is only eligible to borrow the equipment during the Spring Debencher process at this point. So this amount was totaling $1,152,300. The resolution before you is to approve the province of Nova Scotia's Finance and Treasury Board to go to market on behalf of the town for the Spring Debencher process. This resolution approves the parameters surrounding the borrowing, including the amount that can be borrowed, and that is the $1,152,300, and the timeframe of borrowing, five years, and the maximum interest rate of 6.5%. So, Madam Mayor, so the proposed motion is that council approve the resolution for preapproval of the Debencher issuance subject to interest rate as read and presented.
Thank you, Mr. Doulter. You've heard the motion, so I'm looking for a mover. Councillor Fleming and a secondor, please. Councillor McGrath, any discussion on this motion that's been read? Councillor Fleming?
Just a quick comment. Is that the street sweeper I see sweeping all over, the brand new one?
Yes, correct. So this is just, you know, for the, because we received that the payments would start now.
I guess we got it, we got to pay for it.
Oh, yeah. Well, we approve, we approved the purchase of it, it's just now we're just approving the financing.
Any further questions, council? Discussion? None? All those in favor of the preapproval form for the Spring Debencher 2025, please signify by saying aye. Contrary minded? Motion is carried. So, brief, this special, a public meeting of council is now adjourned at 4:02 PM, and now we're going to move into our committee of the whole meeting. Thank you very much. So, we are now in our committee of the whole meeting, so I'd like to welcome everyone today, and thank you for joining us for Thursday, April 17, 2025. The town of Turo wishes to take a moment of silence to acknowledge the tragic events that took place in and around our community five years ago on April the 18th and 19th, 2020. We remember all those who senselessly lost their lives and all those affected by tragedy. We forever remain Nova Scotia Strong. If we could just please take a moment of silence. Thank you very much, council. I'd like to commence with a land acknowledgement before we begin our meeting today. I, Cathy J. Hanton, Mayor for the town of Turo, acknowledge we are Mi'kmaq, the ancestral traditional lands of the Mi'kmaq people, where we live, work, and play. We acknowledge the peace and friendship treaties and recognize we are all treaty people. Nova Scotia has 52 African Nova Scotian communities throughout the region. African Nova Scotians for generations experienced inequality due to systemic racism. Their distinct culture has greatly enriched our province for over 400 years, and we are better for it and proudly celebrate their heritage and history. Okay, we have a full agenda today with a couple changes. We're going to revise it a bit because our item number five, extended producer responsibility with Mr. McKinnon, is going to be moved to another meeting, and we're going to switch the order and have Sarah Belle Delory speak before Carolyn Wright, because someone is running a little late. Okay. So the first item with revisions is the revisal of the agenda. I would call for a motion to approve the agenda. Councillor McGrath, secondor, councillor Prior, any discussion on the agenda today? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye. Contrary minded? Motion approved. Thank you very much. Item two, the approval of the draft committee minutes from March 20, 2025, from the committee of the whole meeting. Assuming everyone has had the opportunity to read the minutes, I would call for a motion to approve the minutes from March 2025. Mover, councillor Fleming, secondor, councillor, surprise me, someone, secondor? Oh, thank you, councillor Graham, to the rescue, thank you very much. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all in favor of approving the minutes, please signify by saying aye. Contrary minded? Minutes are approved, thank you. Now we're going to move on to item, which was item four, now item three, and we have Sarah Belle Delory with us today, and I also welcome the other team members, Logan McNeil from Downtown Turo Partnership in the gallery today. Welcome, Sarah Belle. Let you start whenever you're ready, and I'll just, there we go, perfect.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Sarah Belle Delory, Executive Director for the Downtown Turo Partnership, and I have with me my board president Mallory Wall from English Jewellers, and Dylan Musgrave from Remax, and you all know Logan McNeil, my Marketing and Events Coordinator, and I'm here to present our proposed budget for 2025, 2026. Our history, since 1979, we have been the nonprofit organization promoting Downtown Turo as a destination for both businesses and customers, and we are assessed a levy, an area rate to fund our marketing and activities downtown. Our urban regional core, it is within the boundaries that you see. We have been asked a few times over the years if we can expand these boundaries, however, right now, these are the boundaries that we are a bye-bye. As of right now, we represent 428 members from a diverse mix of sectors, including retail, nonprofit, food and beverage, automobile, government, sports clubs, and accommodations. My current Board of Directors, it is as presented as you see on the screen, and we just recently welcomed a new member of council, which is the prior to participate as part of our board. Staff, Logan, myself. Our current area rate, it is 42 cents per every 100, and our cap assessment value, it is $2 million, and our projected levy revenue for 2025, 2026 is $325,000. We rely heavily on grant applications to fund for supplement our core events, and the ones that we have applied for $15,000 in total this year from Canadian Heritage and Nova Scotia, among others, as well at the Canada Summer Job. Another thing that we rely also heavily on is sponsorships. They also help us to bring our events to life, and we have planned to bring in around $9,000 on that. Our marketing and social media. To date, we have a lot of followers on Instagram and Facebook and X, formerly known as Twitter, and this is where, our social media and our website, this is where we market most of our events, our members as well, and we, as you can see, we reach thousands of people, and these platforms are crucial for promoting our businesses and campaigns like our Downtown So our proposed budget for this fiscal year, it is $30,500 that we will be spending on marketing, events, campaigns, and our businesses. Our events, this is where we shine. Our signature events are Photos with the Easter Bunny, which we just held last week. We had over 70, over 70 families that showed up to take photos with the Easter Bunny, and this was held in our office, which is right across the street. I Love Downtown Turo Day, which is coming up in May, Midday Music, Summer Patio Party, Canada Day, Basque Festival, Harvest Festival, and the list goes on. We also are very proud that we get to partner with our counterparts for African Heritage Month, Turo Heart's Heart, the Pride Parade and the Pride Week, the Winter Luncheon Festival, and other special events. We budgeted $73,450 for our events, which are the core to our community engagement strategy, and these include our signature events, like you know, and we are proud to say that last year, we came up with a new initiative for the Festival of Lights, which it was the light show projection instead of fireworks. We opted out for that, so we are proud to say that we are going to continue with that tradition for this year as well. Our beautification program. Oh, did I miss one slide? No, it is, this is it. So we have two programs currently that our members are allowed to tap into, which is the Facade and Signage Improvement Program, and today we have 7,000 and change remaining in the fund where they can tap into. So businesses are, send an application, and we get, they get approved up to $1,000 for their signage, and we have the Seasonal Beautification Program, and for this, we have, my board had decided to open it up year-round. This was seasonal only, but this year we're going to have it open year-round, so that way our businesses are able to benefit from this, and we have $18,000 available for that. In total, we have $23,150, and this is including our hanging baskets and flower installation in English, the planters that you see around downtown, the Christmas decor, piano projects, and general beautification, as well as you can see in there, there is a Turo sign that we are hoping that we can tap into this year, that it will go along Victoria Square, which will welcome our visitors to the Downtown Core, so let's hope for that one. In our budget overview, our total projected expenses are $364,414.89, with a revenue of $364,200. The difference is minimal, and we remain committed to maintaining a balanced budget while continuing to support new opportunities as they arise. So that's it.
Thank you very much. I love those words, committed to a balanced budget, that sounds good to me. So we're just getting banners hung up around the town now to celebrate our 150th anniversary, which is very exciting with a lot of events planned coming up. So, just thinking outside the box, maybe something you haven't mentioned. So down the road, are you thinking of some other events, the two that are, maybe you haven't thought of yet, that are, you're going to be doing in the town and maybe in the next year, or?
Yeah, absolutely. Logan, my Marketing and Events Coordinator and I, we're constantly trying to come up with new and innovative ideas. As you will know, that there is a project that we have in place. I can't give you any more details about it, because I have to come back and see you for that, but we do have some projects that will be out of the box, and we're just trying to come up with new ideas to make sure that the Downtown Turo remains the destination to be, and, you know, where people want to live, work, shop, and travel to.
Exactly, and Mr. McNeil is very innovative, I can say that for sure. Counsel, we have some questions. Councillor Graham?
Just a quick question, and you may or may not be able to answer it at this time, but I read in the news, and it's something I'd like to discuss with our council as a group as well, HRM have made the decision to remove their marketing and promotion from Twitter, and I note that in your presentation, you, it's a very strong marketing tool for you, but given our relationship with our neighbors to the South and Trump's affiliation with Elon Musk and the whole thing, have you considered or looked at other platforms? And have you, were you aware that Halifax has made that decision?
Yeah, we are in close contact with our partners in Halifax, and actually, we do not rely on X or Twitter for our marketing. We do have it as a platform, but I believe the last time we have posted something, it's been, it's been like seven, eight months that we've used, and it is not one of our projects.
Oh, I misunderstood. I thought in your presentation, you said that it was, maybe.
Oh, it is part of our social media platforms that we have currently active, but it's not one that we use as our main platform. But yeah, we are aware that Halifax is doing that, and we, we will not be opposed to consider uh...
I'm not suggesting that you should or should not, it's just a discussion that
Yeah, for sure.
that I think is worthy of having around your own table.
Yeah, absolutely, and this will be something that I can bring to my board on our next board meeting, which is next week.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Deputy Mayor?
Yes, it was a great presentation, thank you. The mayor alluded to this, but I just wondered, is there any projects related to the 150-year celebration for the town of Turo? Any specific projects or celebrations that you're involved with?
As of the Downtown Turo Partnership, in particular, we are looking into our I Love Downtown Turo Day, which will be in May, and we are looking into tapping into and celebrating the 150th. We are also working closely with Parks and Reg on helping them with their events as well, but yeah, for I Love Downtown Turo Day, we are hoping to do a big celebration for the 150th.
Okay, thank you for that.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I don't see any further questions. Thank you for your presentation, always, always well done and always very much appreciated.
Thank you.
So thank you very much, and happy Easter.
Happy Easter.
So now we're going to move on, we have our little switch reviews on the ANS Community Benefits Agreement, and I believe Carolyn Wright is here to speak with us. Welcome, Ms. Wright. I'll just ask you to push your button there, and right ahead of you on the microphone, you'll see a like come on. There we go, there we go.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can, just speak as close to the microphone as you can.
Yeah.
And whenever you're ready, we'd love to hear your presentation.
Thank you. I don't know if you have it, to bring up, but, so...
Do you have a presentation?
Yes, I do.
Yes, I got it.
Okay. I think it's CBAs up there.
Oh, see, right, not that one.
There we go.
Oh, is it that one?
Yeah.
Oh, it's that one, yeah. CBA?
Mm-hmm. It's not opening? There we go. So what do I have to do, scroll down?
Um, yeah, you can just like, oh, just scroll down, I guess, on this one.
Yeah. Yep. Good evening, everyone, and thank you for your time. My name is Carol Anne Wright. I work for the Halifax Partnership. I'm also Executive Director of the ANS Road to Prosperity. And just briefly around that, ANS Road to Economic Prosperity is a five-year plan, we're in our fifth year, and we have three pillars, capacity building was our first pillar, the second is land and infrastructure, and our third is around employment economics and education. And we've been at this for five years and have, and I have to say, the community, it's community-led, and they've done an excellent job in terms of moving the issues forward. We're actually in our transition year and moving to an independent organization, but wanting to share with you some of the things that have been extremely successful for us. Community benefits is one of the things that the community has identified, is a really important piece. As you know, we have 10 Black communities in HRM, and those outside of the community in the regions as well. And so we were looking at land and infrastructure, this comes from our second pillar, and CBAs has been around the country for a number of years, in the States as well. This is not a new concept. They've been due out of Vancouver, and I think they did it during the Olympics as well. And a CBA was developed, and out of that came affordable housing after the Olympics was over. So CBAs is a formal agreement and a development agreement, and as you know, what exists presently is when there is a development agreement, it's between the municipality and the developer. And CBAs allows the community that legal voice around, you know, what the development will look like. Vancouver and Toronto has a whole, if you look up online, Toronto will have a whole community benefits network, and they build roads and hospitals and things like that, with the community being involved and taking a lead in terms of what it needs as part of that development as well. In Vancouver, it's part of their planning process, if it's, if it is near a community and there's an opportunity for the community to create a body that will look at, you know, look at the development and, you know, talk about what the community needs are. These can be things from jobs related to the development, green spaces, affordable housing, and numerous things. So I have lived in Toronto for 15 years before moving back to Nova Scotia in 94, and I was really surprised that we did not have it on the books as part of the charter, so it's a, you know, it's charter work. So what we have done is, if I can find, oh yeah, this is... So what we have looked at is the implications of CBAs, and we had our, the HRM planners do some work as well, in terms of assessing this, in terms of HRM and the way we do development work. And as I said, what happens is you have a community group that has capacity, you do some training into the group's ability to monitor and to make sure that they negotiate what the community needs are, and that's what we've been able to do. We actually have a community benefits agreement in the community of Beachville, where I come from as well, you know, a historic Black community, and we were able to do that, looking at all the development around the community and seeing the loss of land, the loss of opportunities for community as well. So we were able to put in what I used to call a JAG at CBA, because they weren't officially on the books, but the community was able to negotiate things in order to, you know, boundaries and other things that needed to be assessed, to make sure that the community was still in place. Community benefits agreements are also around training, employment, procurement, local business during construction phase, affordable housing, and the larger, broader community and those needs. So we're really, an important, is really an important piece of work. So in 2020, HRM council passed community benefits agreements as wanting that to be part of the work, and as you know, the province is the body that makes that decision, but HRM council unanimously approved this piece of work, as CBAs as an entity, as a tool. I'm not talking about Community Land Trust today, but Community Land Trust was another piece of work as well. And these have proved to be really effective in communities in terms of community giving voice to what is needed and making sure that development is balanced. CBAs are not, as I said before, are not, are not new, they're also in British Columbia, and as I said, the HRM, sorry, in 2023, I, I had the wrong date there. And so letters were sent to Minister Lorr and the Premier around approving this, so that's what we're waiting for approval, but communities are also adopting that mindset, and so is HRM, the mindset that they want to work with communities to actually make sure that their voices are heard. So what happens historically is, there will be consultation, but there is no legal way to enforce it, and there's no monitoring that the community can say, you promised to do this, and you're not, not doing it, and to, you know, take, so like, you know, because there's no legislation right now, it's only, you can consult, but can you really do anything as a community if the developer doesn't comply, or if the city's not complying, right? So CBAs make that community a legal entity just as important as developer and HRM in that. So we see this as a positive thing, particularly for African Nova Scotian communities who have lost land through, you know, many different ways, through, you know, folks taking land for water and, you know, different things that the developers want, or the HR, or the municipality wants. Beachville's been able to get that back. We've had a situation where being able to look at the boundaries, increase community size, look at the things that have been historically taken, and have a conversation with the city. It, it provides a really transparent process, really, when it comes to African Nova Scotian communities, and when HRM supported this, they not only supported in relation to African Nova Scotian communities, they approved it with the broader community as well. During the process of some buildings near the Commons, Halifax Commons, there was that discussion about CBAs, which weren't on the books as well, because the community could have took well advantage of that, but they weren't, as I said, not on the books, but we've been able to take advantage of that process, with the Cogswell Exchange and eventually with the Windsor Street Exchange as well. And so I'm here relating to your councillor, Wayne Talbot, who is on the Road to Economic Prosperity advisory and brings, because it's also provincial-wide, the work we do is provincial-wide, and we want to make sure that all African Nova Scotian communities has an opportunity to share the success that we've had in the work that's being done. And as I said, we've been able to increase lands in certain, in some communities, increase boundaries, reinstate old boundaries that were taken for expropriation and things of that nature. So we've had some major successes, so we want to be able to share this with all communities and with councils. The key to this is our ability to work with our planners. We've had major success with planners who began to understand what planning means to African Nova Scotian communities, how their involvement helps planning exponentially, and also being able to talk to our former mayor and now our present mayor. When we talked to Mayor Savage several years ago during a roundtable, we said to him, this work will be successful, but we need planners that are specifically, you know, their job will be to work with African Nova Scotian communities, and we know this will increase your budget, and he did that, right? So we have planners, which is called Community Action Planning, that work specifically with Black communities on the issues of planning, and planners are, you know, extremely knowledgeable in terms of their crafts and their technical pieces, which communities have learned a lot from over the past five years that we've been working, so, you know, they know what the legislation is and what the, you know, different pieces, you know, zoning and things like that, people have, communities have become very aware of. That relationship has grown, the planners know about communities, and they're able to help communities as well as, you know, we don't want anybody to lose their job, we just want to be able to understand the job, so the communities make educated conversations, decisions around what needs to happen. So that relationship has improved. We have extra, we now have eight planners that are specifically geared to African Nova Scotian communities, and have four communities that are now doing their strategic planning and looking at CBAs, but also all different tools within, that the municipality already has, that help communities build and be part of the planning process. It also has environmental implications in terms of green spaces and watershed and water particularly, you know, and there's a history of that, particularly in HRM around, around those, around those things. Sometimes community boundaries are, you know, wake up one morning, the community's one size, and then, you know, it's a different size than it was the day before, so not having those things happen anymore, having communities have some agency over their communities, having the opportunity to rebuild and revitalize communities, those are really exciting, and we have a really strong, communities are becoming really strong and being able to lead their own work and their own development, and that, that's, that's new for our community, and it's really a blessing to happen, to have it happen. We met with the new mayor yesterday to be able to talk about that as well. We had a 13-member contingent of communities saying, this is the work that we're doing, and this is why this is important. CBAs are critical to that. As I said, our own major challenge is that is the province, who really has not engaged in CBAs. Most folks, particularly around the country, it's been a municipality and the provincial piece that works together to make sure CBAs can be implemented. So we're still working on that and making sure that it gets on the charter and, you know, looking at what the financial implications are for those things. So those get all worked out in a conversation around CBAs, so we look forward to that. As I said, we frame that in a particular way to make sure that there is a healthy conversation about having organizations have the capacity, but also making sure you have planners that understand the implication of this work and making sure that it's embedded in the process. It's the embeddedness, that's the key. It's not a one-off, it's not discretionary, it's embedded in the process to support communities in terms of developing the work. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much, Ms. Wright. It's so important to have voices heard and everyone hopefully working cohesively together to make positive... to make positive change and, and to bring things to the surface that need to be brought forward. So, I really enjoyed this, this presentation, and I'm just looking to see if I have anybody in the queue, because my system seems to have gone down, but I see my little green light over there, and it's Counselor Talbot, so there he goes. There we go.
Thanks very much, Carol Ann. And like, our new planning document, which is still got a little bit of dust on it, it's about a year old, I guess, but it has a lot of language in it around equity and around things that the town wants to do that, that would, you know, treat the African Nova Scotian community properly. But I think what we're realizing, there's not a lot of tools to, to support that, and planning has been very receptive. We've had meetings with them. They're in the process of forming an advisory committee from the Black community that would have input on development in, in, in the Black community, and I'm really high in these community benefit programs, because I, I do think they have a, a lot to offer, and... I was at a meeting yesterday, and, and it was the development on the fringe of, of the Black community, and, and I, I don't think it's prejudiced, but I think there's a lack of understanding, there's, there's a lack of lived experience, and the developers don't even realize why people are saying, "Well, no, we don't want this big building casting shadows and everything," so I, I think your presentation was, I'm very glad you got the opportunity to make it before council, because I think we're gonna need some council support to, to move this yard down the road, so thanks very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Grant?
Did you want to reply before I ask my question?
Yes, I just wanted to say, around the equity piece, this is a really excellent way to look at equity, because you, the other thing that our, our planners do is walk through communities. So, as, as Counselor Talbot is saying, when you don't understand the process, to be able to walk through a community and see what communities, there's just not complaints, the community actually knows what the impacts of this will be. So, having folks walk through communities and understand the equity piece, these tools, community benefits agreements, and also the land trust issues after you do that, are really, really key tools to equity and, you know, and understanding communities. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Under Counselor Talbot's leadership, we're learning a lot about equity, and we are embracing. I'm a member of the Planning Advisory Committee that is embracing the new advisory committee that has been set up specifically to deal with developments. I'm wondering about process, I'm wondering about specifically what you're experiencing with Minister Lorr's office. Does that pertain only to HRM, the work you're doing there?
Presently now, we've also, once the, the Office of African Nova Scotian Affairs, which is provincial office, heard about that, they recognized that it needed to be in all Black communities throughout the province, so we are also talking to, it's now provincial, you know, provincially, yeah, so we now have provincial work in terms of looking at all Black community, which is why we're here in Truro, is, you know, talking about it here in Truro as well. I think that if, you know, the regions understand the importance of this and also write letters, I think it will be important, I think that will impact Minister Lorr, because right now, our first conversation with them is they weren't sure where to go, or, you know, how it's done, and we've given, given them all the examples, and, and the planners that we have actually have written, you know, this is what the legislation could look like, because they've done the research. So, it is provincial in nature, and really will have implications throughout the regions, and it's not just for, as I said, it has more implications through the regions for the A N S communities.
So, just to be clear, does that mean, how many municipalities are there across the province?
Forty-nine.
Forty-nine. Does that mean we're going to have to have forty-nine different pieces of legislation to an, to, no?
No, not at all.
Okay.
If the province gets involved and understands how this works, it will be, you know, one piece of provincial legislation, but municipality, it will have to be customized to the municipality. That will be the only difference, right?
Okay.
Because, you know, you know, Waymouth and Amherst are two different Black communities, so those, those pieces, what CBAs look like and what they choose to take on will be different. The same is true in Toronto, there's many different, you know, pieces, if you go to region versus your work in terms of those communities, the CBAs will look different. It depends on the community group that's actually, you know, monitoring those projects.
So, what would be our next steps here, do you think?
I think, you know, also helping to get it legislated from a provincial perspective, you know, as a municipality first, getting it through your council is something that you see as a productive tool and something that will help the work that you're doing, that's the first piece in terms of that, because that's been, that was a major boon for us, this have the, have the HRM municipality go, we think this is a great idea, right?
Okay.
So, that's the first piece, getting it through here, and then to the province, we think, you know, this will be really important in province-wide.
Okay. Thank you for your feedback.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Talbot, we're gonna be seeing Minister Lorr the end of the month at NSFM, and maybe we'll have the opportunity to, to speak with him. That would be, that would be good and very timely, considering our presentation today. I want to thank you very much, Ms. Wright, for coming today. Really, really enjoyed this. Thank you very much.
We'd like to talk about it at any time we can.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Counsel, we're moving on now to our final item on the agenda today. It's going to be the Memorandum of Understanding and Service Agreement, the Marketing Levy. I'm gonna leave it to you, Mr. Doulter, to take it away.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, Ms. Grant, I think you're gonna take us through this one?
Sure. So, I believe a memorandum of understanding, a draft memorandum of understanding has been circulated to council, and it is the Memorandum of Understanding between the County of Colchester, Tannus Truro, Tannus Stuyac, and Millbrook Forest Nation to form the Tourism Society that was recommended out of the Regional Strategic Tourism Plan that was approved by council last month. In that report, it was recommended that, that we form a tourism development society to action that strategic plan, and ultimately use the pooled regional marketing levy funds. So, the Memorandum of Understanding just formalizes the agreement and puts together the intent for those four municipalities to form the society. Assuming the Memorandum of Understanding is accepted, a operating agreement would then follow to sort of govern the society.
Thank you very much, Ms. Grant. Mr. Doulter?
So, so basically, the, the MOU is presented to council today just for review. Prior to the public meeting, the actual approval and the agreement to sign will come to council as part in the May public meeting. So, again, opportunity to ask any questions you may have at this time, having had a chance to review the MOU is open to council. So, if there's no further questions, again, just, this is more to aid council coming to the public meeting, if there should be any questions prior to, if we could get answered prior to the public meeting itself.
Thank you.
So...
Anything further, Ms. Graham?
Nope, nothing on my end.
Okay. Any questions, counsel? Do we have any questions? Well, I'm a little lost for words, I don't see the lights on. Okay, so we have no questions now, we're gonna, we can, we have our reading materials, if we need to revisit it, Mr. Doulter?
Yeah, correct. And then, so, once the MOU is signed, I mean, the, the next steps on getting the, getting the community together and start moving forward, obviously, there are a number of organizations within town that are quite anxious for the stand-up of the, of the marketing levy organization in order to, you know, to look at events and, and start organizing. So, again, we'll just start moving things forward, and if there's any questions prior to the council meeting, the public meeting, council can bring those forward to either myself or Ms. Grant, and we'll answer those and get you some answers prior to making the final decision on the MOU.
Thank you. So, you may be hearing from someone, Ms. Grant. Yeah? So, this now brings us to the end of our Committee of the Whole Agenda for April the seventeenth, 2025. I want to thank everyone today for their questions and for other presenters. We appreciate it. Oh, I see a light on. You're turning like a deputy mayor, you're getting the late call. There we go. Counselor Pryor?
Mr. Doulter, is this same thing go out to all Stuyac, Colchester, and Millbrook?
Yes, exactly.
The same one?
Yeah, so, so essentially, all, all of the municipalities involved would have to be in Millbrook, would have to sign off on the MOU for it to take effect.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor. So, our next Committee of the Whole meeting is going to be Thursday, May twenty-second at four P M., and I hope everyone has a long weekend. Please be kind to each other and be kind to our town. The Committee of the Whole meeting is now adjourned for April seventeenth at four thirty-eight P M. Thank you very much, everyone, and have a nice, long weekend.